Thank you. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the Town of Wareham Select Board Meeting for May 30, 2023. May I have a roll call, please?
In attendance tonight is Mr. Alan Slaven, Ms. Judith Whiteside, Mr. Ron Bessie, Mr. Richard Bowen, our attorney, and myself, Tricia Wertz.
Thank you, and absent will be Mr. Sullivan, as well as Mr. Chadwick. Pledge of Allegiance, Mr. Slaven, please.
United States of America, two public who stands one nation under God, that is all liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Announcements, Mr. Bessie?
Uh, nothing tonight.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Mr. Slaven?
Okay, well, first one, just Conway Real Estate opened up on Main Street and Ron gave a speech there for the Select, which was really well done. Veterans Council, just so everybody know, they only have a few members, they need at least three more to function properly. So I'd like to see people step up. Oyster Festival was a huge success on Sunday. We need to really show appreciation to Linda Burke, Bob Brady, Tom Vicki, Nora Vicki, those are the four people that actually run the organization. They require no money from the town whatsoever, from any of our organizations, and they already would do this all on their own. And have to congratulate them for a well-run event. I'm gonna repeat what I said last week about kids with bicycles and no helmets, doing wheelies and whatever else. Mass General Law, it's simple, it says sixteen years or under, you have to wear a helmet. You're gonna force us to go ahead and make a bylaw for the town as well, and make it much more difficult. And I'm just letting the parents know, it's your responsibility for the kids to get hurt, and you need to take care of your children. Thank you. And I think that's enough for today.
Thank you. Announcements?
Did you say me?
Yes, I'm sorry, Miss Wertz, I'm sorry, didn't, I'm sorry.
You kind of froze, the camera kind of froze.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't realize that.
Anyway, I think Mr. Slaven carried them all, covered them all really well, so that's it.
Okay, great, thank you. I just want to, I have a couple, I'd like to thank the Key Club for cleaning up mine at Avenue last Friday. They do this on a semi-annual basis, and they actually were able to only find, I think it was five bags of trash, a whole lot of cigarette butts, but only five bags of trash, and usually they come up with about twenty-five bags of trash. So that's good news. The, I want to congratulate all of the individuals who were involved in rebuilding of the Conway Playground and the kickoff that they had this past weekend. I think Miss Wertz and Mr. Slaven were there, and I understand from the pictures anyway, that it was a great event. And if either one of you wants to jump in and tell us about Pirates or something like that. It's, it's really nice that a community can come together and put together something that has been, you know, kind of yucky for a few years. And so, one of the individuals who was very instrumental in this actually isn't even a resident of the Town of Wareham. So I just want to say, um, thank you to Christie Catalana, who actually, I believe, is a resident of, of New Hampshire.
Yeah.
June is the signup month for the Friends of the Wareham Free Library, if you want to be a member. Um, starting tomorrow on Facebook, they will have all sorts of information about the programs that are going to be available this summer because of the Friends. Um, there will be reading programs, et cetera. Uh, so that's, that's really awesome. And the other thing that I want to talk about very briefly is that, um, at Miss Wertz's request, we're going to go to the second and fourth Monday of the month, as opposed to the first and third Monday of the month for our meetings. That's right, right, Miss Wertz?
Yes, thank you.
Excellent. And, um, the difference for the first, for June is going to be because of we, we have some hearings that we have to do. We have a town meeting that we have to call. Um, so we will be meeting on June 6th, 13th, 20th, and 27th. We will also be meeting on July 5th, which is the day after the holiday. July 3rd is a Monday, July 4th is a Tuesday, and we need to close the warrant on the 5th of July. Then we will go to the 11th and the 28th, which would be, that would be the schedule that Miss Wertz has asked for.
Yeah.
And the town meeting would be July 31st. Then in August, I think I messed up on the date, it would be eight and, eight and fourteen, twenty-two, and the eighth and the twenty-second. So that's what I'm looking, I think that our schedule will be, uh, for the foreseeable future, just so that people can put that on their calendar. And I'll send an email out just for informational purposes, so that you all know that. We have a 7:15 hearing. We have no appointments or reappointments or interviews. At your request, when we do a whole bunch of reappointments next week, we will have the applicants in front of us, even if they are reappointments, um, so that you have the opportunity to introduce yourselves or have the applicant introduce himself or herself to you. We can do item 6B, Miss Wertz. Could I have a motion simply to close the hearing? The hearing, let me just explain for the public, excuse me. Um, the hearing that we originally held was on June 14th of 2022. The applicant did not have the correct information, nor did the applicant provide any of the requirements to have the, um, license granted. In looking through our minutes, we've discovered that we never closed this hearing. So it is appropriate at this time to have a motion to close the hearing. And licenses are granted and expire on an annual basis.
I make a motion that we close the hearing on an application for Papadoniatus Inc., DBA Onset Beach Patio Grill, 182 Onset Ave., Onset, Mass., for a public amusement license on weekdays to, for live entertainment under the provisions of Chapter 140 of the Mass General Laws.
Is there a second to that motion?
A second.
Yeah, thank you, motion made and seconded. And again, this is for a license that would have expired in December 31st, 2022. So any further discussion on the motion?
So just, uh, just a question that I have as a point of order, just to make sure that it's, do we, do we have to, can, do we have to actually continue this hearing before we can close it? Or can we just close it because it was continued at a prior meeting?
It was continued at a prior meeting.
So what if, so we don't?
Opened it, should we have opened it?
I'm thinking, shouldn't we have opened the meeting?
Yeah, I think we should.
And then closed it out? Just to be?
Well, we should have re-revived it, right, Mr. Bowen?
No, it's okay.
It's okay, okay, fine. Then Miss Wertz's, um, motion stands.
If Rich says it's okay, then it's okay.
It's okay, okay, thanks. Any further discussion on the motion?
No, it's okay.
I'm sorry, Mr. Slaven?
I'm just saying it's okay.
Okay, thanks. Um, I will go for a roll call vote then, please, Mr. Slaven?
Yes.
Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Miss Wertz?
Yes.
And myself, yes, the hearing is closed. Uh, let's go to item 7A, Miss Wertz, please.
Okay, I'd like to open a hearing.
No, 7A.
Seven, oh, excuse me.
Sorry.
I'd like to make a, I'd like to make a motion to accept funds from Stop and Shop Community Bag Program in the amount of forty-three dollars to the, um, delivered to the Wareham Free Library.
Second?
Motion made and seconded to accept a, uh, set of funds of forty-three dollars from their community bag program. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote, Mr. Slaven?
Yes.
Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Miss Wertz?
Yes.
Myself, yes, four zero zero, it is appro, they are accepted, we will send a letter. Um, item 7B, Miss Wertz, please?
Yeah, I, I make a motion that we accept funds from Swift, Swift Beach Improvement Association in the amount of thirty-eight thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars to the, for use for the Joseph W. Conway Senior Playground.
I'll second that, but I've got a question.
Yes.
I don't think it's.
Motion made and seconded. Um, the donation actually has a value of twenty-eight thousand, thirty-eight thousand, six hundred and fifty. Um, the Swift Beach Playground, uh, Association wrote a grant and was able to buy, I believe you actually have the list, the totals, the thirty-eight thousand, in your packet, right?
Yes.
So, um, that would, it, it, so I guess we could, I, I wrote it to be accept the funds because it's a value, dollar value, but I guess possibly we should have done it to accept the items purchased with the thirty-eight thousand dollar plus grant.
I would just have to accept the equipment. Because that's what it is.
Okay, Miss Wertz, could you restate your motion, please?
So I make a motion that we accept the equipment from the Swift Beach Improvement Association in the amount of thirty, with value of the amount of thirty-eight thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars to the Joseph W. Conway Senior Playground.
Thanks.
And I'll second.
Okay, motion made and seconded, thank you for the clarification. I apologize for that, um, we had asked for the list before we actually, well, we, we knew what we were getting, but it was my fault for the miswording. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote, Mr. Slaven?
Yes.
Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Miss Wertz?
Yes.
And myself, yes. The other items on the agenda, we will not be able to do item eight, Mr. Sullivan is not here. We will not be able to do the reorganization of the board because Mrs. Chadwick is not here. We don't have any, um, any minutes or documents to sign. Uh, and the item about, um, 7C, D, and E, we probably won't take votes on them, um, on the, particularly on the liaisons, because we haven't done a reorganization. And I think that it's only proper to have the full board here to make those, um, motions and, and to choose those assignments, if you will. But that doesn't mean that we won't be discussing them. Any questions?
No, if you want, we could do 7D, it's, we feel it quick right now. Just not to vote on it, yep.
Okay, okay, um, discussion and possible vote regarding the application forms for liquor licenses and entertainment licenses. We have the authority, we are the local licensing authority for both liquor and entertainment. And our office staff has discovered that many cities and towns in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts actually use the ABCC application for liquor licenses. It makes sense to do that. Um, I was unavailable this past couple of weeks, and Mr. Slaven, I believe, had a discussion with Mr. Bowen about, um, whether it was fine for us to just go with the ABCC license.
Yeah, there's no reason to reinvent the wheel.
Okay. The only question I would have, and again, um, the office staff is tracking this down, is how do, how do we add our fee on top? Because the, that was the one question, so, so they are researching that further. But I think it makes sense to adopt what other cities and towns have done. It's, it's, you know, it's work smarter, not harder. Yes, Miss Wertz?
Um, I've been talking with Maria about it, and what brought it to my attention was in our last meeting, the, uh, organization, the Papagallus, the Onset Beach Patio Organization, had new paperwork came, come in. And it was really very easy to follow, attract who reached out at what time and what part of the conversation. And, um, I, I think it also tracked, and I think we need to make sure it tracked what approvals were in place, whether it was the police or inspections or whatever, I'm not sure. All the, all the ones we looked for were there, but it was a, a much easier, um, forum to understand, and I would think to work with as well.
That was the entertainment license, right?
I, yeah, I think that's what it was, yes.
Okay, yep. Um, excellent. Any other questions? I have to say that our office staff in the form of, um, miscarity is just an astonishingly good, good employee. She, she goes, she researches things back to the beginning, which is great, and how we are discovering some of the things that we're discovering. Uh, yes, Mr. Slaven?
On the entertainment license, I think what we're gonna do, which makes the most sense, is we're gonna have to, we'll be a lot more thorough. Uh, we're gonna have to also, uh, basically duplicate, I think it's Chapter 140, Section 183, and basically print that out as a separate piece for the application, because that gives us a lot of rights, et cetera, that I don't think we realized we had on these licenses. We can act unilaterally, and a lot of different things are involved. As you know, we have an issue right now we're gonna have to deal with. And, uh, the liquor license, of course, we talked about using, you know, ABCC, just having them file that form direct. We'll probably on our website put down a separate form for the, you know, that they have to come and make the payment to us. And, uh, in that same form, we could have the, which Miss Wertz mentioned, the different departments that have to check off. And we could take care of it that way, but we'll make it as simple as possible. But definitely on the entertainment, want to have a complete layout of where the entertainment is gonna be, what direction it faces, what houses and, you know, businesses, et cetera, and the line of fires, is the best way to put it. And I want to definitely have a, an hour limit of when they can basically have entertainment outside in particular. Uh, we used to have over by the Glencov Hotel, there was an outdoor entertainment setup there between that and the house next door, there was an open area, used to be a pool there, I think. Uh, we got a lot of complaints of people all the way across Burgess Point, et cetera. They could hear the music all night long playing. Uh, it's hard to believe, but sound actually magnifies as it travels along the water. So it's a serious issue, you know, for people eleven, twelve o'clock at night being woke up and can't go back to sleep because the music is blaring everywhere. So we'll take care of it, but it's gonna be a little, we're gonna have to do a little more work, especially on the entertainment license, before we issue any entertainment license.
Well, Miss Wertz has mentioned the, the checklist that the office has, and I think that we had added something to that. Am I correct, Miss Wertz, we added?
I think we had, I think there was at least one thing added, and there might have been another one we wanted to put in there.
Yeah, I think it was, um, zoning requirements possibly, I just don't remember what it was. Yeah, but you're correct, I think that that is a cover sheet for anybody, you know, looking at the application is important. The other thing is that a license is a license, it is not a privilege, and therefore the licensing authority has the right to change the terms of the license, should the public not be being served adequately. And I think that that is a statement that I would like to have, make sure that people understand. We understand that there are some issues with some licenses within the town. There is a process that we must follow under the law for entertainment licenses. It's Chapter 140, Section 183A, and I think I know it by heart now. Um, and our other licenses, which are all alcohol licenses or something like that, this is Chapter 140 and Chapter 138. So there are many things that we actually have to look at. But the hours that we have been granting, I think we can tighten those up, and I certainly think that we, that if, if a, if an establishment is in a commercial zone or whatever, I don't think I really have a problem with that, because it's not impacting a neighborhood. But if there was, if there was a, a, an establishment that is, you know, it's a prior establishment, and it's in a neighborhood, then I think we have to be very careful about what we are granting.
Do, do, do we have decibel level requirements on our licenses yet?
No, because our bylaw doesn't have the decibel levels, Miss Wertz. I think you had asked, I think you had brought that up before, and, um, we looked at it. So possibly that's something that the planning board should be looking at.
Be addressing.
Yeah, you're the liaison to them, would, would, would that be something?
So far, yeah.
Could?
Yes.
Would, would you mind researching what other cities and towns might do as well?
No, that's not a problem. It's really, it's really interesting. Where I live, those of you who have lived in the town for a long time know of a place called Gildas. Gildas is on the Marion side of the Weewee Anak River, on the far side, across from Gateway. And they had great blues and jazz bands in there. The decibel level was really nice at my house. Now you know how far away my house is from where Gildas was? And, and they're rebuilding it, so, um, that's why I asked about the decibel level right off, um, the top, because it makes a huge difference.
Right, if you don't mind pursuing that, that would be very helpful to the office staff as well. Now, Miss Wertz, I will ask you for a motion to open a hearing. It's now 7:15, so would you make a motion on 6A, please?
Make a motion, we open a hearing for the application from 3082 Cranby Highway, DBA Wareham Truck and Equipment for a Class II license in accordance with the provisions of Chapter 140 of the Mass General Laws.
There's a second to the motion?
Second, I have a question.
Yes, hold on, hold on a second. There's a motion and a second to open the hearing.
Open the hearing.
Yes.
I, I have a question on opening the hearing. Uh, this particular applicant has to go before the ZBA for a special permit. Uh, Rich could probably answer, because I, I actually forget. Uh, if we open the hearing, it sets, it starts a date, you know, when this starts. And usually there's a, a certain timeframe where we have to act, or else it, it has an effect. So my question is, do we open this hearing because they have, or not, because they don't have a special permit from the ZBA yet?
Um, let me just add one twist to that comment. We discussed the fact that they've already paid for the advertisement, they've paid for the hearing documents. Their attorney has told us that they are not ready. Um, and in discussion with the attorney, and again, Mr. Bowen, please weigh in, we thought that it was better to open the hearing and recess the hearing, so that that saved them having to re-ad, re-advertise, go back over the whole thing. But Mr. Bowen, could you address that question from Mr. Bowen, Mr. Slaven?
Uh, yes, ma'am. Uh, Madam Chairman, members of the board, the question is governed by a 1944 Supreme Judicial Court case called Lincoln versus Giles. And in that case, the Supreme Judicial Court of the Commonwealth decided that the jurisdictions of the Board of Selectmen differ from those of the land use boards. So as applied to, uh, Select and Slavens question, that means that you could proceed along on this application in an independent track from what our land use boards are doing, and that any action that you might take uh, regarding this license would not have an effect on, uh, time or whether the land use board should approve the license or anything of that nature. So, uh, the door is open for you to act as you think appropriate.
Thank you. So my suggestion would be that we vote to open the hearing, and that we have a motion to recess the hearing to a time to be determined, if that, if I may make that suggestion. But I need to have you first vote on opening the hearing. Motion made and seconded to open the hearing, any other questions? No, okay, I will go for a roll call vote to open the hearing, please, Mr. Slaven?
Yes.
Bessie?
Yes.
Miss Wertz?
Yes.
And myself, yes, the hearing is open, and now, Miss Wertz?
To make a motion that we recess the hearing for the application from 3082 Cranby Highway, DBA Wareham Truck and Equipment for a Class II license in accordance with the provisions of Chapter 140 of the Mass General Laws until further notice.
Second?
Motion made and seconded to recess. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote, Mr. Slaven?
Yes.
Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Miss Wertz?
Yes.
And myself, yes, the re, hearing is in recess. Miss Wertz, may I have a motion on Article 6C, please?
Make a motion that we grant a one-day liquor license to Dusk Till Dawn Tattoo Studio.
Second.
Motion made and seconded.
We don't have a date on this, so do I need a date that we?
Uh, we, yeah, I was just looking for that, um, because we do have her total application, and it is. Paperwork is in order, we, we've reviewed the paperwork, I just need to find that date.
It's event on June 9th, 2023, date of event.
Okay, excellent, that was part of your motion.
Yeah, from 7:30 to 11:00 PM.
Okay.
That's part of the motion.
Thank you, may I have a second? Okay, the paperwork is all in order. Is there any further discussion to grant? This is a second one-day liquor license for this individual, and the one granted prior had absolutely no problems at all. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote, Mr. Slaven?
Yes.
Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Miss Wertz?
Yes.
And myself, yes, four zero zero, it is granted. I would ask that all of you make an effort in the next day or two to get a signature on those documents, that one particularly, um, so she can pick that up. Uh, okay. 7C, we're gonna skip over, um, until we have a full board present. And let's talk about 7E. Unfortunately, we know that we have a dangerous dog hearing that will be held in approximately two weeks, probably on the 13th, I believe, is the date. Um, we have been advised by Mr. Buckminster that we have several dangerous dog hearings coming up. I can only urge people who own dogs to certainly get them licensed and have them, um, on leash or under control at all times. We do have a dog park, and I'm hoping that none of the incidences that we're going to be hearing are in that location. Um, I know Miss Wertz actually lives in a neighborhood where there was prior, um, we had a hearing, what, three weeks ago, four weeks ago, something like that, on a danger, dangerous dog hearing.
Yeah, and it's so bad that, um, there are people complaining again, and the people beside them put their house up for sale.
Um, okay, so one of the things that we really need to talk about is, there's a process. It does not need to be advertised in the paper, but we have been told that we should use a two-week forward notification to the owner or owners of the dogs. Um, so, uh, do any of you have missed your, any questions, or Mr. Bowen, would you like to weigh in here?
Oh, no, I, I think you've covered it.
Okay, you probably have your dog sitting with you right now, the dangerous dog, right?
Uh, he's, he's such a pest, I had to put him in another room.
Ah, I see.
Trying to jump up and knock the camera over.
Okay. So one of the things I think that I would say is, if you are, if you're a neighbor or if you have incidences with dogs, that you report them to the Department of Natural Resources immediately. And that if you have problems with, with any kind of, that, that are related to dogs in any manner, shape, or form, that you document those, um, incidences. And they are probably the most unpleasant part of our job. Beyond a doubt, the most unpleasant part of our job. But that is the law, we have the right to, uh, order dogs restrained, um, fenced. One of the things that came up after the previous dog hearing was that we need to be more specific in our orders. We have to have a timeframe for completion of what we have required. Um, and again, that's, as we drill down and all of these things, we're, we're becoming more specific. So, oh, there's freckles.
I mean, so, one of the things, I mean, I'll, I'll go back to, uh, what I stated in a previous meeting. We talked about, you know, restraining your dogs, getting your dogs, making sure that they don't get out, you know, one for their own safety. So this kind of piggybacks off of that, on the opposite side of the spectrum, is, you know, it's hard for us to identify problem dogs, uh, especially if they're not registered in town. Um, you know, so it's very important, it's not, you know, we're not, you know, we're not asking for registrations because we want to, you know, get rich as a town. We're asking for the registrations for two reasons. One, so we can identify when a dog gets loose, so we can get it back to its rightful owner. And then, you know, if there becomes an issue with a, you know, nuisance dog or a, a dangerous dog, we have a better way of identifying who the owner of that dog is, so that there's no question of, it's my dog or it's not my dog, especially if it comes to, you know, a dog that's had a problem where it's attacked somebody, but some, whatever it might be. Um, so it's just as important on that side of the fence, too. So if you haven't done it, and you need to do it, please do it, because it is required in the town to be registered. Um, so just do it, because it's gonna make everybody's life easier when there's either a good problem. Oh, I, I don't want to say your dog getting out is a good problem, but at least we can get it back to where it needs to be. Or if there's a, a problem where we have to actually identify who owns the dog in the instance that we have to have a hearing because something happened. Um, so it, it's, it's, it's just important. Um, our pups are just as important as our kids. Um, you know, I've got, you know, several kids, and I've got, you know, I've got a pup. Um, you know, I've got, you know, several kids, and I've got, you know, I've got a pup, um, they're just as important. Um, so please, for the, for the best interests of your dogs and for your neighbors, if you don't have a registered dog and you have a dog, please get down to the town hall and get it registered, so it can make everybody's life easier, uh, on both sides of the fence.
And I'm going to add one thing in here, uh, thank you for, for making that statement. There are no dogs allowed on any town beach at any time, ever. The dog park is open dawn to dusk. They're pretty simple rules that make sense. Um, so, I think we exhausted that one, Miss Wertz.
I'm just laughing because I'm on a beach that's considered semi-private. And the big argument here is the people who actually line up have property that borders the beach, says I own out to the low tide mark, so I can bring dogs wherever I want, versus where the town says you cannot put them on the beach. So, w- w- we have a town where I'm sure there are lots of other little beaches, like Briarwood Beach, where there's some pushback forward and not, but i- i- it's an area that's that can cause neighbors to not talk to each other, believe me. Um, the other thing is, uh, when, um, we look at signing, um, dates or, or limits to time for performance, then, you know, how much do we do to spend time checking on whether they, they are met?
That's a really good question, and if, if we order, I think I can answer it. Um, if we order, you know, X, A, B, and C according to whatever D N R has, uh, recommended to us. And then we put a timeframe on that. It is up to D N R to make sure that those have because I, we are not the enforcement officers. Okay, but I, that's a good point. Any others? Okay. Um, go to Liaison Initiative Reports, Board's Comments, item nine. Mr., Mr. Bessie?
Uh, nothing tonight.
Thank you. Mr. Slaven?
Uh, just one area. Uh, we had Veterans Day yesterday. Uh, the Veterans Council, uh, basically visited six different sites in the town, which were veteran areas. Uh, they basically had the militia there. Uh, one of the, I forget the gentleman's name from the funeral home who does a great job on the trumpet, you know, blowing taps. Uh, Matt Stanton and several people from the V F W. But we probably had anywhere from maybe five to ten people actually show up and be there for each one of the stops total. Uh, it's really disappointing that we show so little respect on Memorial Day, you know, for veterans that have, you know, passed or whatever, and just in general. We don't have a Veterans Day, we don't have a Memorial Day parade. Uh, three of the communities around us do. Uh, I would hope that maybe one of my initiatives a year from now will be to put together a Veterans Day parade to show some respect and everything else, but it's extremely disappointing. You know, I know that the, uh, people from World War Two have virtually gone, the Korean War, et cetera, you know, there's very few people that participate. Vietnam War is a very difficult situation, but it's extremely disappointing to see the lack of respect. That's all I have to say.
Alan, I, I'd like to piggyback on you, what you just said for a minute, is I usually like to go to those events. I mean, having a husband come out of Vietnam and the way he did, I, 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 they're important to me. And I vaguely remember reading something, someplace that this was gonna happen, and then for whatever reason, I didn't put it on my agenda, and I just lost it. So, we have a lot of things that happen in town where I think more people would go and, um, participate if we had a, uh, some better way to put it out in forefront for them. Um, I, I have to think about that, you know, like noticing their Shaw's shopping bag or something, you know, this, there's gotta be a way to pull it out front a little bit more. We have Wareham Week, and they do a lot of good articles, but not everybody reads Wareham Week. Um, and we have our sign out in front of town hall, but who knows what's on it at any given time? And what anyone's gonna see as they happen to drive by, because it rotates. So we might just wanna think about what we do to make sure these things are more visible, so that there is better attendance.
The committee, because of the few numbers this week, and they didn't reach out, usually they reach out to me ahead of time, and it was disappointing, you know, like I say, it's, uh, something that really should happen in this town. There's a lot of veterans in Wareham.
Excellent, excellent points, thank you. Any other? Oh, that was yearly, okay, Miss Wertz, liaison reports?
No, I'm good.
Initiatives? I'm, I'm sorry, I was over talking. Are you all set?
I'm all set.
Okay, thanks. Um, I don't have any additional. I did give you the dates. I, again, I will send you a memo. I apologize for having, we're going to be meeting every Tuesday in June, unfortunately. And the reason for that is, we will be having some show cause hearings, we will be having some dog, dangerous dog hearings. And we also are coming up on the end of the year where we have some business that needs to be closed out before the end of the year. Is there any other business to come before us this evening? Hearing none, because we have nothing else?
Motion to adjourn.
Second?
Motion made to adjourn, seconded, it is not debatable, and therefore, um, I will go for a roll call vote, Mr. Slaven?
Yes.
Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Miss Wertz?
Yes.
And myself. I wanna vote no, because
I was just gonna say. Jared's vote, yes.
I was waiting for you to do it.
Cause I was thinking about it.
Okay, yes is the answer, um, yes is the vote, and so we are adjourned at seven thirty-seven, and good night, Wareham. Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen. Enjoy your evening.